All right. Good evening. I call the City Council meeting for Wednesday, March 9th, 2022 to order. We have a moment of silence at the beginning of each of our City Council meetings, and we're going to have a wonderful presentation tonight. We're going to see wonderful work by beautiful children and their wonderful families. I know we're all thinking about families across the world right now who maybe are not in the situation that we are tonight. In less than two weeks, 2 million people have fled a country in Europe, have fled Ukraine, and half of those, a million of those are children. So I know we're all thinking about them. I know you're all thinking about them. And so let's think a little bit tonight about the blessings we have here and about those folks abroad. Thank you. Alderman Ortiz, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Brian, would you please call the roll?
Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Cornet?
Dickman?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Ortiz?
Here.
Ten percent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to go over the protocol for the Committee of the Hall meetings. As we begin this meeting of the City Council tonight, I'd like to welcome all those in attendance and all those who are viewing the meeting on your computer or mobile device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and viewers throughout the region. We're happy that you're participating in your city government, and we ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of us, all citizens. At this time, we do ask you to turn off or silence your cell phones and other electronic handheld devices, as they can interfere with the audio system in the chamber. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on a committee agenda, you are encouraged to do so during the standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the City Council under the public with business portion of the meeting, which occurs toward the end. When addressing the council, I ask you to step to the podium, wait to be recognized by the mayor or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to a single member. You are asked to limit your remarks to no more than five minutes. And please, I ask that everyone observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Thank you very much. Let's see. Will an Alderman move the approval of the City Council minutes for February 23rd, 2022? All in favor? The motion passes. Is there a City Council member, a City Administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. So will an Alderman move the approval of the report on the Committee of the Hall for March 2nd, 2022? All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. We do have one appointment this evening, and that is for the appointment for the Historic Preservation Commission, Dave Arbogast, which will be a new appointment. Is there a motion to approve? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes. So we have one presentation tonight, and this is our 2022 Art in City Hall. We will be presenting certificates to each of the students, and I will be down at the podium and ask Steve Swagler, the Fine Arts Curriculum Specialist, to join me there. And after you receive your certificate, you'll be asked to line up along the dais, and then we'll take a picture altogether and make sure all your families have enough times to take good pictures of you as well. So thank you.
I want to thank the Davenport City Council for this partnership with Davenport School District and directing attention to the value of art education, and for encouraging commitment to the arts by students, community organizations, and individuals everywhere. Also, for increasing the community's understanding and interest in art and art education through involvement with this exhibit. So thank you, students and art educators, for your work, and thank you to our Davenport Schools Administration and Building Principals for their support of fine arts education. And especially thank you, parents, families, and friends, for being here to celebrate your students and their work and accomplishment of being selected for this honor. Now on with the awarding of certificates by Mayor Protem Marion McGinnis. Our first student to be recognized is Montserrat Lopez from Central High School. You'll see the drawings over here or artwork over here on this side of the council chambers. And boy, does that look really neat in large like that, too. So this is a drawing of one of my favorite places here in Davenport, she says. And the Sky Bridge is a beautiful place to visit, and my drawing looks quite like it. That's why I'm proud of it. Our next student is Evan Gambucci from Mid-City High School. Here's the quote, "I was on my way to the Sky Bridge to take a photo, but as soon as I got out of my car, the colors of the sky, the trees, and the lighting captivated me. Instead of heading to the bridge, I chose to take this photo." And there it is. Beautiful. Our next student is Cameron Snyder from North High School. "When I was tasked with taking a photo of a Davenport landmark, the Ferris wheel and bridge were the first things that came to mind. The color of the sky fading from orange to blue was something that only happened for five minutes, so I had to work quickly." Next student is Abigail Race from West High School. She says, "My friend and I were walking around Van de Veer in the Botanical Center, and I was inspired by the vibrant colors of the plants and decorations." Next is Ruby Clarkowski. She represents the Creative Arts Academy and says, "I really like this art piece because it has lots of color, just like our city. I was inspired by all of the art and color we have throughout our downtown area and by all of the historical houses." Next, we have Kalen Spidell from Smart Junior High. She says, "I chose to use City Hall." This should be a favorite, right? "I chose to use City Hall because the building stands out to me." I don't know if this next student is present, but we want to recognize Hamina Montez Reyes, and he's from Sudlow Intermediate. And his teacher is also not present here tonight, so I'll take that certificate with me. But this was my experience using ebony pencils, his first experience using ebony pencils, blending sticks, and needed erasers to make a realistic self-portrait. Notice the mask on there. Addison Willett from Williams Intermediate. I don't think he's able to attend either. But they said, "My uncle is getting married at the River Center, and I helped him and his fiancee pick the place back in the seventh grade." Okay. Next is Athena Norman from Wood Intermediate. "I got the inspiration from Davenport's most well-known and visited places by our fellow Americans. I chose pictures to recreate and shaded within the darkness and lightness of the pictures." So there's multiple things you see there. I think you can all identify where they are. Our next student is Emily Jacks from Adams Elementary. Mayor Protem commented on this artwork earlier, and she says, "This artwork means a lot to me because I worked on it so hard and I believed in myself." Kylie Farnham from Bluegrass Elementary. "The reason I chose this landmark is because in science, we took a field trip to the Putnam Museum, and I love the amazing equipment there." Next is Michael Norton from Buchanan Elementary. Michael said, "I drew the Centennial Bridge because it reminds me of when me and my mom go over the bridge every day." Next is Lucy Schrieker from Buffalo Elementary. "I have always seen commercials about the German Heritage Center, and I've always wanted to go. Every time I walk or drive by, there are fun, pretty things in the windows." Next is Isabella Easton from Isabella is from Eisenhower Elementary. She says, "I like to go to Van de Veer Park to sit with my family and watch the fountain." Margaret Powers from Fillmore Elementary. "I chose to draw a modern woodman because it looked hard and I wanted a challenge." Next, we have Tracy Pollard from Garfield Elementary. "I chose to paint the Figgy Art Museum because they have a lot of awesome artwork there. It is cool." And next, we have a presentation actually to a bunch of students who their artwork was put into a collage. And so this certificate we made out to Harrison Elementary, 4th through 6th grade. It has the City of Davenport subject and places. So a lot of contributions there. Hayes Elementary is Keon Justice. "I drew this picture of a man in a canoe, his reflection, if you look, you can see the reflection, his reflection because I love fishing with my family on the Mississippi River. It is a great way for our family to spend time together." Next, we have Jefferson Elementary. Alene, sorry, Ariana Greer. "I was inspired by the Davenport Bridge because I would always go over it and see the river." Next, we have Abigail Tedla from Madison Elementary. "The clock tower is my favorite part of downtown because I can see it from my bedroom. I like to be creative that way." Very good. Next, we have Brighton Jobe from McKinley Elementary. "I drew the First National Bank in Davenport because I liked the architecture of the building. I chose the color with value because I thought it would look good. When I drew it, I didn't think it would look good, but it ended up better than I expected." Eliza Korth, Monroe Elementary. "Why I chose Van de Veer Park is because my dad was going to pet the geese, but instead of petting them, he got chased by them." There's always good stories behind these artworks. Logan Crawl from Truman Elementary. "My artwork is a Quad City landmark, the Figgy Art Museum. The Figgy is a cool landmark, so I decided to draw it." Next, we have Chase Brixton from Walcott K8. "My mom and dad used to take me there all the time, and it is a big memory. All the times they took me there, I loved it." And next, we have Isaac Thornburg from Washington Elementary. "I drew a selfie by the Figgy Art Museum. I think that the Figgy is such a cool building. I like how it is made of all glass." He's got the mask, too, to represent what we've been going through. And last but not least, from Wilson Elementary, Isabel Rook. "I chose to create this artwork because I love the way it looked at night." And that concludes our presentation.
Actually, I can send everybody. You got it? Yep, I can. You're good? Yep. All right. We're going to do one on the camera and then one also on a phone. One, two, three. All right, one more. Hopefully, I can get everyone. Can this end scoot? And it's a little bad. And can that end? Can you step a few steps in, too? All right. A little further. Keep going. All right, one, two, three. Okay, now stay there for a couple seconds. Let your parents grab it, and then you can
Um, we will go ahead and get on with our meeting, and you're certainly welcome to stay if you'd like. We do have other business tonight. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on with the business at hand, and thanks again to all of our folks who came tonight for our wonderful art exhibit, and we'll enjoy your art for the rest of the year. So now, I'll take petitions and communications from council members.
Oh. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to remind everyone that my eighth ward meeting is tomorrow at 6:00 at the Eastern Ave Library, and Nicole Gleason has been gracious enough to come and speak on the capital improvement projects, the ARPA projects, and answer any questions. So anyone is welcome, in or outside the eighth ward. Thank you.
Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of brief comments, both related to art in the Davenport Community School. So art in City Hall is one of my favorite nights of the year to see, because I see so many familiar faces, and I'm always sad that they leave before we have our council with comments. But also, the great artwork, and I always like to point out, and Alderman Condon and I have the same observation. When children go to be inspired by the city of Davenport, they go downtown, they go to our riverfront, they go to Van de Veer Park pretty consistently. They like bridges on the river, and they like the big buildings downtown. I have yet, and now, this is my seventh Art in City Hall, I have yet to see anyone draw Elmore or 53rd Street. They continue to draw our great downtown and our great riverfront. And then the second comment is, I've had some really good interactions in the last week with the arts programs within Davenport Community Schools. The show choir brought all of the elementary school children down to the Adler this week, and Davenport Central Band and Jazz Band has been competing here in Davenport and are winning accolades across the street, or across the state, and they are just running an incredible art program in the city, in the Davenport Community School District, and they're giving people a reason to choose Davenport Community Schools, and I want to recognize them for that. And I'm going to work with the mayor to get the Davenport Central Band in here and give them some recognition and praise for all the awards they've been winning here in the state and throughout the Midwest. Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Ortiz?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is another reminder that on March 21st at 6:00, I will be having a fourth ward meeting at the Keppi Hall located inside the Mississippi Valley Fairgrounds. We'll go over, we'll have staff there to go over the two-way conversion, and please bring your cell phone. We want to get as many residents as we can signed up for the different and wonderful apps that the city provides, so that way, if there's any special events or meetings, we have a way to contact you and let you be aware of upcoming meetings or events. So 6:00, Keppi Hall, inside the Mississippi Valley Fairgrounds, March 21st. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Not seeing anyone else, we will move on to the individual approval of items on the discussion agenda, and we do have one item, and that is a motion approving the following annual liquor license renewal. Ward eight, GD Express Ram 2 LLC, 4607 North Pine Street, license type Class E liquor. Is there any public with comment? Will an Alderman move the motion? And is there any discussion? Alderman Lee?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I plan to enter a motion to table the vote on this liquor license renewal, but I believe it's important to provide the opportunity for my colleagues to discuss this before I enter the motion. So I request the opportunity to speak a second time at the conclusion of my colleagues' discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this motion? Alderman Cornet?
Chief, is there any information, new information on the event that happened at GD Express?
Also, of course, your police chief. What was the question again, sir?
Alderwoman Lee was tabling this until the report from the police came out. So was there any new things to report on it?
I don't have anything new since the report that I've sent to all of you. If you have any questions on any of them specifically, or I can kind of maybe give you just an overall summary of what we found, maybe that would help?
Sure.
Okay. So we did, as requested, we did a couple months in 2018, from November through the end of the year, all of 2019, all of 2020, and all of '21, and then from January 1st till March 1st of 2022. Just calls for police service to see if we can see any trends or anything like that. There were no calls in the last couple months of 2018 at this establishment. And then the rest of the years hovered around 20 to 25 calls for service that we handled. In looking at these, I haven't seen any trends that are alarming, that I can see that are business-related. Certainly, when you have violent crime or drug overdoses or things like that at an establishment, it raises concern. It raises concern for all of us. But one thing I can tell you is, looking deep into this, the business has been cooperative with the police department. They have. When we ask for something, seemingly, they drop what they're doing and assist us. In this last incident seemingly, they, they drop what they're doing and, and assist us. In, uh, this last incident at this establishment, they were of great assistance, uh, uh, with, uh, with our officers and our investigators throughout the process, and are continuing to be. Um, and that seems to be the trend, uh, there that, that, that we have noticed, is they're, uh, they are cooperative with, uh, with our efforts. Um, so that's really, uh, you know, I didn't find anything, uh, to point us in the, in the direction of the establishment is, um, kind of causing or creating an environment or, or anything like that, um, related to the calls for service that, that we have been handling up there, if that helps.
Yeah, that's fine. You know, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the, the proprietor was cooperating with the police and-
Yes, absolutely.
Nothing that he was doing was causing any of this.
Um, not that, not that we can tell.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Chief Sikorski. Um, uh, Alderman Dickman.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. So I represent the area directly across the street from this establishment, and, um, based on feedback that I've gotten, uh, across the years from constituents about, um, this business and what it's like to live across the street from it, um, I will be supporting Alderman Lee's motion to table. That's all.
Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief, I ask you, there's just a couple of follow-ups. Um, like you said, uh, owner in question here, um, is there anything in your opinion that he could have done to prevent this, um, like horrific thing that, or sad thing that happened, in your opinion?
You're talking about the, the incident, the, the last incident there?
Yes, yes.
No, not at all.
And you said cooperating. Um, hasn't this owner also, on, uh, in the past, when you guys needed, uh, from video footage to identifications that had nothing to do with his business? Um, hasn't he provided you guys with a number of videos and, you know, assisted you guys a number of times to help solve or assist in investigations?
Yeah, they have, uh, they have assisted when we've asked for assistance. I, I don't know about incidents unrelated to the business. I'm, I'm, I couldn't, couldn't give you any specific ones on that, but-
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief, uh, the calls for service to this place, how does that compare to, say, any other tavern business in the city of Davenport? I mean, it's-
Yeah, it's pretty, um, it's hard to compare. It's, you know, it's not, it's not a tavern.
Right.
It's a, it's a gas station, I would say, convenience store type of establishment. Uh, we have others that have higher call volume, uh, for, uh, calls of police service, and we have some that there's, um, not much at all. So, um, it's, it's not alarmingly more than, you know, any other, uh, place in the city that, that, uh, that we work with.
Okay. So you, really, the police department doesn't really have a concern with this establishment? That's the way they're on? I mean, they've always worked with you in the past?
They have. Yes, they have.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and, you know, that's one of the things we look for. We want business owners, managers, uh, people that work at the stores. We want them to be responsive. We want them to work with us. If we have suggestions for them, we want them to, you know, take those seriously, and if there are things that they can do environmentally for the business or, uh, with the way they're doing business, uh, we want them to be responsive to that.
And they've done that in the past?
Yes.
Thanks.
Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, Chief, just one last one. I guess probably the most recent comparable would be, um, I think a cycle ago, um, we had some questions about Brady Mart. And so I think it's probably a similar business. So when you say similar, you know, similar findings, similar things there, I mean, I think you did some legwork, uh, for us in that regard as well. Um-
Yeah, I would tell you for, uh, Brady Mart, I think the calls, uh, were, uh, a bit higher. I don't remember what they were off the top of my head. Um, I do have, I, I guess I have, uh, more concerns about that establishment related to, uh, potentially the sale of, uh, alcohol and tobacco, uh, for underage, and those kinds of, uh, those kinds of things that we've been working on.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Uh, you know, I will be supportive of tabling. I don't, I don't think there's any problem with, you know, just, you know, seeing more information. In the end, I will likely, I will most likely end up voting in favor, you know, when we get around to it, I will most likely end up voting in favor of renewing this liquor license. But that's just where I stand right now. Thank you.
Um, I, I want to make sure, because I can't see if Alderman Kelly wants to speak. I'm just asking, um, if, if he had any comment or question. Alderman Kelly, do you have any questions?
No, thank you. I appreciate being able to speak. I was going to, when, uh, Alderman Jobchin was speaking, Brady Mart and Easy Mart were on my mind when they were talking about DBs. So all of these, I was in the comparison, but Officer Sikorski, thank you for that. But so I, I am agreeing with tabling, just so I can hear more information as well.
And I had a comment, if I, Alder, uh, Chief Sikorski, um, and I also, Attorney Hoyer. So I guess, I guess one of the issues that many of us are grappling with are, uh, the, uh, with, with, um, s- stores that stay open late and sell alcohol, um, the best run, um, is things that happen, and also with some of our, things that are happening in some of our bars, and the relationship is kind of alcohol, and our inability to control licenses, um, if things become a problem. Um, I, uh, I would wonder if, if, if we can look at, if there is a way in, in the way we're trying to use data to identify where crimes happen, if there's some way we could put together sort of a map of where the hotspots are, and if that can relate to anything at all. I'm not asking you tonight, but, um, a question about that, because, um, it does come up again and again, and I know all of us with, uh, issues in our works, and many of us have those, and they're establishments that sell the same thing, and they're not, they don't seem to be a problem. So what is the, I guess my question is, what is the common factor, and how can we, um, maybe get a, get a handle on that, and the way we're trying to use data for, to pinpoint other crimes? So, do you see any possibility of doing that, or any way we could do that, or?
Yeah, we, uh, we analyze data all the time, and, and we certainly create maps, uh, for crimes, um, in our city. So, I mean, we, we have those available, and we, we would just need, you know, a, a time parameter, what kind of crimes we're looking for, um, and, and do we, do we want to do the whole city and then look and see what's inside those? Um, you know, it, it would, it would take a little work just to define what we're, what the work product, uh, that we want to see.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Alderman, uh, Ortiz.
Thank you, Your Honor, for the second time to speak. Just real quick, and maybe I'm confused, or maybe just so the public understands and my fellow colleagues. Um, Chief, uh, wasn't it the person that was involved with it, um, purchased two fountain pops? I'm trying to grasp between why we're talking about a liquor license here when the people, the whole incident didn't have anything to do with liquor whatsoever. It was actually two fountain pops that were purchased on this incident.
So as, as far as the actual criminal case is involved, uh, it's not appropriate for me to talk about any of that information, uh, in this forum. It's an open case. It's still ongoing. Yes, we have made an arrest in it, but it's still open and being investigated, so.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Don Alderman Ortiz. Alderman, uh, Cornet.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, at my ward meeting, Major Bladel was, uh, able to supply a map of the hotspots in the city, and very informative, so, um, you know, maybe Major Bladel can sort of give you where the hotspots in the town are.
Alderman Dunn.
Thank you. I'm just curious, what, what are we gonna gain here by tabling this? I, I know we're looking for more information, but I don't believe we're gonna be able to get more information. You know, uh, this was an unfortunate incident, yes, but this could have happened anywhere in town. It could have happened at Quick Shop on Rockingham. We had, uh, shots fired last night at Genesis, right? Um, it, it's, it's unfortunate, but I guess by tabling this, what, what do we, what, what more information are we gonna try to get here before we make a decision?
Alderman Lee. Well, I, I don't have anybody else asking to comment right now. I got the- Well, who've not commented at all, but, um, I don't see their buttons like them, so. So, and yours was the next.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mayor. And, um, to answer everyone, a very serious incident occurred at the GD Express, um, in the eighth ward, at this address, per the, um, Davenport Police Department records. It's a shooting homicide. So, as the eighth ward Alderwoman, I believe it's my responsibility to take some kind of appropriate action in support of the Davenport Police Department investigation into this matter. Um, I am not going to move that we do it for, until the investigation is done, a much shorter period of time, because I think that's appropriate. But I think, uh, we need to give a chance to re- we need to recognize that a homicide, a shooting homicide occurred there, at that address, and, um, support the Davenport Police Department investigation into that. So with that, I therefore move that a decision on the renewal of this liquor license at the GD Express be tabled for just two cycles. I feel that's a reasonable period of time for such a serious and important Davenport Police Department investigation, and even if it's not done, it will come back, um, for a vote at the end of two cycles. And if I understand right, Attorney Hoyer, this does not affect their ability to sell alcohol, because they had a, um, uh, their application was timely. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's just a tabling of the liquor license itself for two cycles, and I believe that that's my responsibility as eighth ward Alderwoman.
We have a second? Should we, do we call the roll on this? Oh, I'm sorry. And, uh, so, any comments on this? Sorry. And that would be Alderman Gripp.
There was a motion and a second to table? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so there, there's no discussion at this point in time?
All right. So we call the roll? We call the roll.
Gripp?
Yes.
Cornet? Dunn?
No.
Dickman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yeah.
Ortiz?
No.
McGinnis?
Lee?
Yes.
Ann Jobchin?
Yes.
Eight yeses and two noes, Your Honor.
Next, uh, there's a motion for approval of all items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion, um, for approval? Um, Alderman-
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to take, uh, one item for the, the civil service off, uh, to discuss, and then if there's no further discussion, I would put it back on, and if there is, then, uh, we can vote on it.
Would you like to go ahead and discuss it?
Yes. Thank you. So, I, I missed my, I missed my chance last week. I've been pretty quiet about this one, about this topic, uh, but my silence hasn't been to, due to a lack of care. It's just that it, it happened to take me six weeks to fully form my opinion on it. Um, and so I thought, I better, uh, share my thoughts before we vote. So this topic, this specific topic has come before the council, um, in contract negotiations several times, uh, over the years, and each time I've been pretty adamant in my position that we should not eliminate state residency requirements, or loosen in any way the residential requirements on civil service employees. Uh, the reason I take this position is because I think the city is better off when its public servants live in the city they work, especially in a city like Davenport. We live in a large metro area that encompasses two states and many municipalities. We are the most accredited municipality. We're the highest paying municipality. We offer the best services, uh, in the Quad Cities. When our city employees take their high pay and great benefits, um, to other cities and live there and pay property taxes there, uh, especially when they're not accredited, accredited, don't offer the paying benefits we do, and don't offer the levels of service we do, um, it bothers me. So why is this coming before us on the city council now? Um, especially since the city council's been pretty adamant for, uh, a while now, um, that we shouldn't do this. Um, because, like every, uh, city across the country, we are having a hard time hiring law enforcement officers. Um, and there is a, a belief that this might help just a little bit in recruiting potential law enforcement officers who live in the state of Illinois. And I recognize the need to be able to expand our search for police officers, and I, I generally agree with that, that premise. Um, while we are struggling to hire law enforcement officers, we are not struggling to hire other categories of civ- civil service, um, mostly because we did, the city of Davenport is a great place to work. So I went, uh, down the road of potentially making a, um, a motion to only open this up for the police department. Um, considered that for a while, had many conversations about it, uh, had some great discussions with, uh, corporate counsel, uh, Warner, and I decided that while legally, uh, we probably, uh, could make that, that motion and pass it, um, it would also likely, um, have negative consequence, uh, consequences that made the idea not worth pursuing in my mind. So I felt that left me with two options. I could vote against it, uh, because of my ideology, knowing that, uh, either decision that we make will not lead to more Davenport civil servants living in Davenport, or I could vote yes and potentially increase the talent pool for the police department. Um, I'm deciding, uh, to do option number two. Um, I'd also like to say that I'm still interested in looking into an incentive program for city employees to live in Davenport, uh, although I acknowledge that it's very difficult to build an effective residency incentive program. I also want to reiterate to our public servants, um, whom I hold in high regard, how valuable it is to have them in our city, paying taxes, being good neighbors, going to our schools, using our parks, supporting our businesses, and being valued members of our city. And thank you for allowing me to speak on this. If there aren't any other comments, you can put it back on the consent agenda.
Are there any other comments? Alderman Condon.
Uh, my feelings on this are, um, in the public record, and while it took Alderman Gripp six weeks to make up his mind, similarly, it took me six weeks to make up my mind. Um, but I normally speak a little too freely, and you got to watch me bounce off the guardrails. Uh, whereas, uh, my, my stoic counterpart was able to summarize my feelings much better if I would have just waited. Um, but, um, again, similarly, I recognize that, um, this is a challenging, uh, decision once again, because it, it's a practical decision, uh, on something that I'm very princled bold about. So, um, I just wanted to summarize my comments, uh, today, um, or, or maybe more appropriately, thank Alderman Gripp for summarizing my comments.
Anyone else? No one that will go back on the, uh, for the vote? It will be, it's back on the, the agenda. So, um, we need a motion, um, to approve all items on the consent agenda. Second? Roll call?
Jobchin?
Yes, except for I will abstain from the assumption high school April night, uh, liquor license under item number 21.
Ortiz?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Cornet? Lee?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Condon?
I will vote no on the civil service matter and yes to everything else.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ann Kelly?
Yeah.
Okay. Ten yeses. Alderman Condon's no for number three noted, as well as Jobchin's abstention from the assumption liquor license.
Thank you. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? Step to the podium, state your name and address or word, and you will have five minutes. Anyone would like to speak tonight?
It's a short one tonight. Good, good evening. My name is Dale Gilmar, and I live in the sixth ward. If you remember last week, I stated that, in my opinion, I thought safety should be the number one concern in the downtown. Tonight, I'll expone on, uh, e- e- expound on that, just how the one ways are inherently safer for those traveling to a downtown destination than two ways. I'm gonna prove that to you. For the purpose of discussion, I would like to make an assumption, and you've all heard the joke about assumptions, okay? But I believe there are a similar number of downtown destinations on Third and Fourth Street on both the north side and the south side. Oh, sure, in some blocks, there's more on one side than on the other side- the other side, but overall, I believe the number to be close enough for at least a comparison purpose. So for my example, let's say you're driving west on the one-way Fourth Street, and let's say your destination is on the north of the right-hand side. You park your vehicle in front of your destination, and you exit your vehicle on the traffic side. Now, as in the above example, you're driving west on Fourth Street, and your destination is on the south or left-hand side. You park your vehicle in front of the destination, and you exit your vehicle on the sidewalk side. If the streets are converted to two-way traffic, when you park in front of your destination, or anywhere on Third or Fourth Street, the driver will always exit the vehicle on the traffic side. When you return to your vehicle, the same routine is repeated. If you exit your vehicle on the traffic side, you will again have to enter your vehicle on the traffic side. Is there anyone in this room who feels that exiting and entering a vehicle on the sidewalk side is as dangerous as exiting or entering a vehicle on the traffic side? God, I hope not. So logic tells us that two-way streets will double the amount of drivers exiting and entering their vehicle on the traffic side. And the DDP wants us to believe that two-way streets are safer for motorists driving to a downtown destination? Really? You're kidding me, right? Repeating what I said last week, I believe that safety should be the number one issue in the downtown, or anywhere for that matter. Next week, I'm going to tell you why I love the downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else with comment? Are there any reports or of city officials? Okay. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.